Good afternoon, everyone. This is Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, North Carolina. Calling to order a special meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me in the room is every member of council, save council members Johnson and McKeever. I believe Peters is here.
He's around.
She's here. She'll walk in the room here shortly. Prior to moving into our agenda, I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt. Second, motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it and our agenda is adopted. First item, item 2025-393, Municipal Service District's Presentation. Stephen Howard-Look, our Budget Performance Director, will present to council on this information. So Howard-Look, how are you?
Well, Mayor, thank you, and a good afternoon to you and members of the council. This presentation's gonna dive into municipal service districts. Before I get into the presentation, just a little bit of background. Municipal service districts have been discussed, even at a high level, at several of the past Mayor and City Council retreats. It's included in Forward High Point or Downtown High Point Strategic Plan, and we did touch briefly on it during deliberations of this past budget. This presentation provides some background on municipal service districts. It'll talk about the process and requirements for establishing one and providing services within one. It'll talk about what a potential High Point Municipal Service District could look like, and also a potential timeline if council decided to move from this all the way to implementation and an effective date. And so municipal service districts, they're also referred to as Business Improvement Districts or BIDs. Municipal service districts is how they're defined by statute. And so they are defined area within a city where the elected body levies an additional property tax, and that revenues from that property tax fund enhanced, and that underline is on purpose, enhances a key word in the services that are provided. I'll mention this a few times, but let's say within your district, you're collecting garbage once a week, and you want to move to twice a week. That's an enhanced service. You couldn't use the revenues from this to supplant the one-time-a-week service. That's an existing service, and so that's where that enhances, is really a requirement for these areas. And any property tax levy is applied to taxable real and personal property within the boundaries of the district. So if you're going to establish a municipal service district, there are a good amount of requirements. So first, there is an official report on the proposed district, and this report must include a map with the clearly defined boundaries, a statement attesting to the need for the services, and there are several services listed in that North Carolina General Statute number, your plan for providing the authorized services, and your report must be available for public inspection for at least four weeks. And I note there that statute reference, downtown revitalization is one of the allowable service needs, and that's the most common one used for kind of downtown municipal service districts. Other requirements for establishing municipal service district, you must have a public hearing, and that public hearing must be, the notice must be published at least one week prior, and you must mail to all property owners within the proposed district four weeks prior to that public hearing. So give them ample notice of said hearing. You obviously need to hold the public hearing. This says adoption of resolution. That's actually changed in the statutes. That's adoption of an ordinance. There were some changes in 2016 to the statutes to more formalize the process, and one of those was to adoption of an ordinance created in the district, and I apologize for the error in that. And the effective date would be the start of the following fiscal year. So if you approve it in December, it would start July 1st, the next July 1st. In terms of providing services, as I mentioned earlier, you cannot supplant existing funded-for services. The city can provide the services themselves if they so choose, or they can contract with an outside agency or organization. If that's a route that is chosen, there's also a good amount of required criteria defined by statute. Some of those include, it must be selected via a bid process. Any contract cannot exceed five years. There must be another public hearing before the contract is awarded, and there are other requirements for the organization that has awarded the contract and thus providing the services. Some of those include soliciting input from the owners and residents within the district on at least an annual basis, providing an annual report, written and in person, to the city council, and providing accounting of all your expenses of your services to someone designated within the city.
Quick, can we do questions while we're there?
Yes, sir. Happy to answer.
Sounded like there were several things there that would require quite a bit of effort of our staff on an ongoing basis through the years, additional effort. So are we in a staffing position to handle that? Depending on the amount of services that we end up deciding we're gonna provide?
I think depending on services and then the mechanism for providing the services would also come into play.
That need to be considered as we go forward?
And so within that report, if that was the next step in this process, you do require a statement of need to show that you're meeting the need for downtown revitalization services. So some statistics and information regarding our downtown. Eight hundred sixty-nine new jobs since 2019, with 2024 as the end date. Over three million visitors to downtown High Point in 2024. A fifteen percent growth in visitors downtown over the past few years. A new hotel opening next month, maybe within weeks. Thirty new downtown housing units, and additional almost three hundred, two hundred ninety-three planned by 2028. And six new businesses of the commercial retailer/restaurant area to open around the stadium by 2026. What all this data is telling us, and I think if you ask anyone who's been on this council or involved with the city, there is growth downtown over the past several years, and there's announced expected continued development and investment. And so defined downtown revitalization verbatim from the statute there. And so improvement services functions that promote your public health, safety, welfare, convenience, and economic well-being of the central city or the downtown area. Another requirement of the report is a proposed map. Maps and PowerPoint don't get along very well. And so I do have it pulled up as a PDF which provides a little better. And so the northern end, this boundary here, that's State Street. This is Main Street, the main core.
Stephen, try to drag it right to the other screen.
Okay, thank you for that. This northern boundary here, this is State Street. This is Main Street coming down. You'll notice on some of the kind of, you know, your front-facing businesses here on Main Street. For municipal service districts, not always, but if there's a residential area, you want to exclude that because you're really talking about more of your commercial side of your downtown. It's not a requirement, it's just kind of best practice with how these are formed. Scroll down a bit. Here on the eastern side, you have Hamilton and Ren, and there are some kind of jut-outs, and within the PowerPoint, if you need to zoom to the exact boundaries, you have the railroad here, and then this is Lindsay on the end. And so you kind of have your core downtown, but then also, you know, up along Main Street where those businesses are. Again, this is just a proposed potential. Prior to adoption, any boundaries can be shifted before approval.
So Stephen, how do you make, if you want to make changes in the boundary, what is that process like? Do you want to subtract or add?
It's a similar process to creating one. It is defined in the statute. You go through a similar process. I have the statute in front of me, but maybe not the exact formal process, but very similar notification of folks. Things of that nature.
Stephen, as defining this MSD currently with downtown, once this process is established, is possible to draw an MSD anywhere in the city?
Potentially, yes. It would, again, the requirements don't apply just to downtown, but the downtown revitalization is kind of part of it.
No, I'm just saying, in terms of establishing an MSD boundary, it can be applied.
Some larger cities in the state have multiple MSDs. Charlotte has about five, but if you think of the core city of Charlotte. Raleigh has two. They have been their downtown core and then along Hillsborough Street, which is part of, you know, related more to NC State. Most other cities have just the kind of one traditional one.
Stephen, you want to happen to have a comparison table that shows us where High Point stacks up against other municipalities who have and don't have? You would happen to have that, would you?
Who have a municipal service district? I would tell you that High Point's probably the one ally that does not have one.
You're basing that off of the top ten cities, top twelve cities?
And just past experience with them. The most recent ones of major cities that were added in the state, Wilmington within the past decade, and Winston-Salem about 2013. Most others have been established, small, medium, large cities. Since, much, you know, earlier than 2013, 2016, et cetera.
I know our presentation isn't done yet, but I would imagine for this group might help us to see how we compare to some other municipalities. And not just compare in terms of having them and not having them, but the maturation of each municipality's downtown areas in those areas where the MSDs are applied. I think are part of what we'll consider, and I know we're not there yet, but considering if this is the right timing for it. One of the factors that go into it is where we are, less in that sort of growth curve for our downtown. Thinking about the timing of it, it just may not be the right time. And it would be helpful from an information standpoint to see, you know, if you're telling me everyone does have an MSD and it's going well, how long have they been into this downtown revitalization compared to High Point? So where there are other case studies where they were, you know, for us, I think we're at year, year six officially since the stadium's been done. Maybe you can go eight years if you think about when they had the big announcement in 2017, but I'd be curious to know if other ones are in that six-to-eight-year mark, who already have it, or are most of the examples who have it are ones who started revitalization like twenty-plus years ago? Because if so, that could be informative for this group.
We can do some research and see what we can find out, either through existing studies or just reaching out to the governments themselves. Thank you. Glad you brought that up.
I also had a question. Do the MSDs have to be contiguous? Because I'm wondering about like, if we wanted to add South Main, obviously like market would fall in between them, so do they have to be touching to be connected?
I can double-check the statutes on that. I would note that the question, as someone's been involved with these in the past, if they're not contiguous is, how are you providing services that kind of jumps an area that would not be included? But we can double-check the statutes just to confirm whether that's something that's allowable or not. Or the other option, if it wasn't allowable, would be exploring an additional one, if that's something that, that'd be the alternative path. So we talked with the county tax office with that potential map, and got a current estimated valuation, and that taxable property is $217,115,152. And so using a nine-nine cent collection rate, nine-nine percent collection rate, excuse me, we factored that out for what, an eight-cent property tax rate and a nine-cent property tax rate? And so those are the revenue that would be generated from that tax. The reason we use those numbers, nine cents is currently what Greensboro and Winston-Salem levy. Greensboro used to levy eight cents, and it increased, I believe, around 2020. And so for comparison purposes, that's what we use, but, you know, each cent generates about $22,000.
So Stephen, how do you change the property, the tax rate on the bid? Is that, what does that process of?
It's part of the annual budget.
Okay.
And so it's, it would be included in the budget ordinance that you adopt. It could also be done through a separate ordinance, but the night you adopt the budget, you're also setting the rate if you have one of these. So if you wish to change it at that point, that's when you would do it. What type of services could potentially be provided if there were a downtown High Point municipal service district? Kind of high level, we have place-making, business success, clean and safe, marketing and promotion. On the place-making side, this could be enhanced streetscapes, sidewalk improvements, new benches, potted street trees, things of that nature. On the business success side, a potential grant program for interior and/or exterior renovations to existing and potentially new businesses. Clean and safe, there could be a clean team service that could operate one or two or three days a week around the stadium and Main Street, providing kind of an additional level of cleaning. With more foot traffic, you may have more trash, and you want to have a more presentable appearance, and so that's where that clean team service comes into play. That is a very common service among a good number of municipal service districts. Also, an ambassador program, potentially having folks during key events or sporting events that can kind of be the eyes and ears of downtown, providing directions to visitors, providing information, things of that nature. And then also marketing and promotion, downtown branding and/or marketing campaigns. And so this timeline is, we'll say it's in theory, if this process went from today all the way to the start of next fiscal year, this is what it could potentially look like. And these are not, you know, required dates, it's just kind of spacing it out. So if there was a desire to move forward to the next step, this presentation cannot serve as the preliminary report. That report must be generated and must be provided to council. And then there could be a council consideration of setting a date of a public hearing. And then you have to go through your required steps prior to the public hearing, hold the public hearing, and then if council wanted to move forward, you can consider, again, that's ordinance, not resolution, creating the municipal service district. If that had happened and the decide, the decision was made to not provide the services in-house, but to have them provided by an external agency or organization, you'd want to have time for your bid process for contracting, for the contract for those services to be provided. Awarding that contract, again, would require a public hearing, and that award would be done by city council. And then you have the budget process, you would adopt a tax rate as part of the budget process, and then a municipal service district would officially go into effect on July 1st of the following fiscal year.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
If the MSD goes into effect July, the funding from said MSD doesn't become usable until July of 2027, but we would be awarding a contract in 2026?
It would be available 2026. So while the revenues haven't been, you know, the cash hasn't been collected through the tax collections, it would be budgeted, knowing that they're going to be collected and provided to the city's funds.
So we would be providing it, I guess, to your point?
Similar to, you know, we're operating now as a city, but majority of our property tax collections will arrive in January, February.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to entertain any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Howard-Look. Any other questions from council on this?
I have. That's Councilman Moore. Wouldn't there some discussion out of Rebecca or Downtown High Point or something about talking to businesses over the last few months about this? I've gotten some phone calls about what?
What this may be or? What I know, because I got the survey, Business High Point is polling, surveying all of their businesses there in the area. I haven't seen one officially come out of the Downtown High Point group, but do you know, matter of manager, if they're doing one?
There's been some initial conversations to let business owners know that this is being considered. And once there's better direction in terms of the desire of council, then Downtown High Point would also spend some time interacting with those businesses one-on-one to get feedback of what they would like to see, of how they could support those businesses. And I think that's also information that would help inform the report and the services that we would say could be provided or that business owners would like to see downtown. So the actual formal outreach being done by Downtown High Point has not been conducted yet. Some of these are going to be parallel processes that we're going to have to work through.
Well, I would think that that type of feedback from the potential impact would go a long way and then the information we might get on the others that are already up and established as to how this would roll out, how each member here may feel about it. So I think maybe some of that type of feedback would be important to get.
There is some initial feedback when Downtown High Point did their strategic plan downtown. That's initial feedback, but it wasn't specifically tied to just establishing an MSD.
Based on the map, the proposed map that was up there, there's some overlay of our unique town and our furniture industry. How does that play in for those people? Is it, I mean, they're already kind of within a furniture market district. So is this totally separate from anything they're already under and how that'd be affected?
Yes, if a map was approved that included a showroom, they would be subject to whatever levy that was.
So you could have some overlap between the two.
Which may be unique to us.
It is.
And has Market Authority said anything about that possibility?
We've had initial conversations with Market Authority about this, so they know the conversation around establishing the MSD is occurring. You know, clearly there is, you know, some concern about the fact that you would have showrooms that are in the boundary. But based on where some of the showrooms are, if you were to try to draw boundaries that would exclude showrooms, then it would make it a very difficult MSD to really enforce. So there's going to have to be some conversations about what does that look like, and then those showrooms being informed about what's happening. So we're trying to have those parallel conversations as well.
I think that could also give a great opportunity for some of these showrooms that are in that district to do some things throughout the year, to try to generate that extra income of that tax, like rent it to artists for little pop-ups throughout the year, so that it activates the space and it's not just empty. So I think that that could give us a good opportunity.
Yeah, a quick point just to add on that from some conversations. If you look at the, where it does lay out, Mayor Pro Tim, it is a very nominal percentage of the showrooms collectively in High Point that would be impacted by it. The other thought that comes to mind is when the city so many years ago decided to put some zoning restrictions on where showrooms could go. The sort of spirit of it was to, if you look at where the district is, where downtown currently is, and where that sort of Venn diagram has the combination, the spirit of it is that more of it moves that way and not this way anyways. So don't get me wrong, I, we want to consider everyone here, but there are some folks grandfathered in to their showroom status who aren't technically in the district that we would want them to be in, if I could say it that way. So we hear all the time, I know of a property that just lost their status, because they're not technically in the showroom district, they're like a block over. But if they were operating a showroom consistently, they keep their license. But the moment they stop doing it, that grandfather clause sort of gets dropped and they're no longer in there. So if you look at where this is at, this is right in that spot where we actually want folks transitioning away from that, because otherwise we continue to have encroachment. A couple of thoughts here. Can you go back a couple of slides to potential enhanced services? Did you have one slide or two slide on this?
This was the main slide. Uh, this was the main slide.
So I'll tell you, haven't been in a lot of discussions with Downtown High Point, the strategic planning discussion, and then just other discussions since then, we've talked about how downtown, in order for it to be successful, we know that eventually to get that sort of organic foot traffic, you have to have really good mix of live, work and play in downtown. While we don't have the organic foot traffic, the question is how do you manufacture foot traffic via more marketing, special festivals and events, campaigns to get folks down there, just different things that can happen, attract more businesses, so on and so forth. You can see where, if you had enhanced revenue to lead to enhanced services, how you could do some of that manufactured sort of foot traffic part. But the problem, which is why I raised the question earlier, is that is this not a little too early to impact some of that organic foot traffic that we would need down the road via more investment in our downtown? So, and we have this conversation all the time, to charge for parking or not to charge for parking, right? A lot of people can park on High Point's downtown streets because we're free, and it's not like we haven't talked about charging for it, we just think it's a little too early because our downtown's not there yet, right? And so I think that's one of the things on my mind, which is why I'd love to see what you all come up with, to let us, let us see where High Point is sort of in our growth process for our downtown versus where others are. Something tells me just anecdotally that we are much earlier in the curve than a lot of other ones, and if that ends up being the case, it would be for this group to consider. If the timing just needs to be considered.
So do we want that information before they do the formal report? Y'all need like a vote on whether or not to proceed with?
I think at this, at this point, we would, it would be best for us to be able to answer some of the questions that have been asked, and then to bring that information back to the council before we start writing the initial report. Because I think that information would be informed where the council wants to receive with the report coming out.
Is there any impact to timing, doing it now or doing it later? Is there any impact negative or positive for us to maybe possibly delay the implementation?
I mean, if you're looking at the timeline, you know, there is, you know, clearly some room built into this. I think the biggest part will be making sure that we're able to have the report done and that we have the time that required four weeks that is out there for us to get feedback and being able to go to the public hearings. It may push out the time that we're able to handle the bid process for contracting the services. You know, that could get pushed out a little bit further into 2026, but there should still be opportunity for us to have that done by July. We'll just have to be mindful of that timeline.
So we do have, we do have some time to get a full, complete picture of what this implementation will look like.
We do.
Yeah. Councilman Andrew.
Let's go Councilman Andrew first.
Yeah, just one thing, this may be very early, but with only a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars of revenue, I'm curious on what these grants are going to be for interior and exterior renovations, because you can eat up a lot of money on renovations, so.
How do you know?
Well, yeah.
So I'm just curious. And that's something that within, if it was contracted out to an outside agency, you know, that could be spelled out in the RFP that, you know, if that was something, it, you know, doesn't take fifty percent of the budget toward that or something, that, again, council gets to ultimately decide the services provided, and so there's restrictions or allowances.
Yeah, or cheap.
And I think that would also be part of the process of determining what were the, what are the services. We may not start off in, you know, that first year of providing building outfit. It may be that that's something that comes later as your revenue starts to grow. I think that also ties back to the comment that the mayor made around the right time for us to do this. You know, there are clearly different schools of thought around it. Do you establish the MSD and establish the tax rate early on in a process while the downtown is still growing and building so that as a new investment is made, you have the boundaries already identified, you have the rate already established? Or do you wait until the downtown is where you want it to be, and then you start to implement the MSD and put the rate in place? I think that's also something to keep in mind because we also can't supplant revenue. So clearly, as the city continues to budget and the budget for the organization Downtown High Point continues to grow, we're investing more money in downtown. So as our own city budget grows, we won't be able to supplant that revenue with this new MSD revenue if we wait to establish the boundaries and put the rate in place. So they're just, I think they're trade-offs that the council's going to have to consider in terms of what is the right time to do this and what are the boundaries.
If there is further feedback, I do remember somewhere we heard from, at a presentation months ago, that we've contacted thirty businesses in an area we think may be part of this, and we've heard back that the twenty-five of them are interested to know more about what that might look like. If there is any more feedback from those within the proposed district that somebody has, I'd be interested to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all, any comments? Stephen, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate it. Next, we've got Mr. Piper, and I'm going to make a guess here that both of these items, you'll probably dovetail right into the next one after you go through the task force update into the UDL update.
Correct, yeah.
So we have items 2025-400, and item 2025-401 presented by Mr. Andy Piper, Planning Administrator for City High Point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to present here about the implementation task force for the High Point 2045 Comprehensive Plan. And with me to this evening, I have a couple of members of the task force, Rashonda Moses as well as Joe Blosser, who are going to help me present, but I'm just going to kind of tee it up here and then turn it over to them, and then we'll have an opportunity at the end for some additional questions. So just kind of as a refresher, the comprehensive plan adopted last year in May included three big thing priorities that we have to get right in order for the desired outcomes of the plan to be achieved. So we have the cultivating a sense of community and unity, really about kind of connecting the different disparate parts of the city, strengthening the sense of vitality in our downtown, kind of continuing that momentum that we just heard a little bit about, as well as diversifying and integrating housing with land use and transportation options. So those were kind of the three, the three big things, the priorities of the plan, kind of guiding it forward. Under each of those, we also have five strategic initiatives that were identified that really are the, what we need to undertake to really achieve the ultimate goals. So under each of those five, under those three big priorities, there are five strategic initiatives. So that really formed the basis for a series of tables, which you see before you. The plan identified the need for an implementation task force to kind of help refine and guide the implementation process, including updating these tables as necessary and making them publicly available. So we formed that, or the city and council formed that task force, starting at the beginning of this year. We've met multiple times throughout the year, including in June, we gathered at the City Lake Event Center and kind of went through the different strategic initiatives, and we had given a little homework to the task force to review those tables and kind of look at the, there are kind of several pieces of that. There's the success measures, like how do we know when the strategic initiative has become successful? We set some target dates and years for that, as well as, you know, kind of what are the, what's the status and the kind of a lead organization and the partners that would be involved in that. So we gathered, kind of broke into groups, reviewed it, came together to form a kind of a consensus of how we wanted to update those implementation tables, and that's what you see before you today. So we're just kind of, kind of quickly go through a kind of an overview, kind of hit the highlights of what we believe is the way forward. So I would like to just acknowledge quickly, there are a couple other members of the task force. Councilmember Peters is our city council liaison, she was involved. Rebecca just left, but she was also on it, as well as Joe and Rashonda. We do have some staff members, Peter is a member of the task force as well, so just wanted to acknowledge them. And real quickly, just to kind of, before we turn it over to the task force members, again, the different kind of pieces of it, you see the strategic initiative there on the left, the success measures, really mostly straight from the plan, those are identified throughout the plan as part of when the strategic initiatives are introduced, as well as the target year and range. I will just kind of clarify that that's for when completion of the strategic initiative. So that's the, you know, while lots of things are going on, you know, prior to the end point of the strategic initiative, that's kind of the end goal date. And then as well as kind of a status of where we are now, and then the lead organization and partners. So I'm going to turn it over to Rashonda to have her talk a little bit about the first set of tables about cultivating a sense of community and unity.
Good afternoon again, everyone. My name is Rashonda Moses, and I am very happy to be part of this task force and part of the subcommittee that is working toward the initiatives that cultivate a sense of community and unity. Of course, everyone has the table in front of you and it's here. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things and just talk about our level of activity. It's been a very active process. Our meetings have been very, very productive, and so I'm appreciative of the process of this. We have some initiatives that are very much in exploration. For example, Strategic Initiative One, those items are still under exploration, but we do have some that we're able to celebrate already. We obviously have the completion of the community development and housing, housing market study in August already, and we're also very happy that we have already seen a minor increase in the budget that's adopted under Strategic Initiative Number Two. And we're also very grateful for the process and the progress in the Housing Impact Fund as that is growing, and appreciate the city's contribution and support of that. I will, I'm particularly excited about some of the community-focused initiatives. I will skip, I'm going to skip over Washington Street for a moment and talk about the collaboration with partners to revitalize the Southwest area, and to say that one of the main sections of that, part of that initiative that's underway is developing the standards and regulations that will apply to transitional industrial space. Those conversations are underway, and everyone is very excited about the possibility of increasing housing by sixty units in the Southwest Mill district. But I want to go back and really highlight and just show appreciation and excitement for the progress in the Washington Street community. We have seen a lot of support from the city, participation by city staff and our community association meetings, for which we're very grateful. This, the underground project has gone as well as any massive project like that could go, probably better, actually. There's going to be some level of inconvenience, but the city has been very communicative with us. The contractors have been very mindful and just considerate of our business operations, and that has gone extremely well. We're also excited about the Shop on Washington initiative. We will, Business High Point will be joining us at our community association meeting in November to give us updates, but in the meantime, Business High Point has reached out to the participating business partners, and there will be some progress in that. And I want to thank Councilwoman McKeever again for being our kind of lead speaker at our last community association meeting, just to allow the residents to ask her questions and get to know her better and hear her vision for our city. So we are extremely excited about the progress of creating this sense of community and unity within our city.
Rashonda. So next, we're going to have a.
Or have to fall there.
I know, right? Great talk. Yeah, this has been a great committee, Joe Blosser, to get to serve with many of you on it and get to meet other residents and kind of process through what we want our city to look like. And I was on the team that was working on the revitalization of downtown and that second major strategy. The first part of that is how do we focus geographically? Already, Rebecca's group Downtown High Point has already been doing some education, but we talked about doing more education about what kind of incentives there are out there for businesses to get involved with that. I think people are excited about the RACE grant and the Greenway and the possibilities that will have to spur businesses. We've already got some good momentum under that first strategic initiative. We already talked about the Municipal Service District today, and the questions that you all as council were raising were pretty much exactly the questions that were coming up within the resident groups as we were talking about it, really a question of timing. When is it best to do this thing? Do we do it before we construct two-hundred-and-fifty new residential units, or do we wait until after? So we gave a large time window on the MSD, because even within our group of residents, there was a pretty wide opinion about when it would be best to have that. I do think there was, people saw the value in it, and it was really a question of when, when do we want to do this? Because we have a lot of pieces that we're trying to get put into play, and most of them are talking about incentivizing businesses, and is that tax going to be an incentive? We're seeing this as disincentive. So one of the big areas is obviously housing, where we really need more housing in the downtown space. Again, Downtown High Point is working on that, as is the David and Helen Congdon Family Foundation, we have developers next week, so thanks for being there. But, you know, we targeted two-hundred-and-fifty new residential units by 2030, we would like that to be a whole lot more and a whole lot sooner. There was definitely interest in the group to have this not take quite as long. You don't want to wait until 2045 to have a thousand units, but we're also trying to be realistic, the planning department works on long timeframes. Councilwoman Peters has pushed us to move some things forward and make some stuff happen as well in these conversations. So the other pieces of the downtown, just thinking about master streetscape and really thinking about, again, if you have an MSD or you're investing more money in sidewalks and roads, like what does this really need to look like? What's placemaking in that downtown look like? What's the budget for all of that start to look like? So those are the other pieces that, along with branding and identity, all that kind of placemaking work so that when someone is dropped down in Downtown High Point, they know where they are, because they look around and they see, oh yeah, this is the downtown district. We all know we want to get there, it's this question of what needs to come next, right? What are the pieces? How did the dominoes fall to get us there? So, and side note, I toured the Spring Hill Suite today, and it is amazing. It is going to be a huge asset here in the community, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'm going to take the last bit here, because a lot of this has to do with things that the City of High Point is actually taking the initiative on, including an update to our development ordinance. Not going to spend a lot of time, because as you know, we're going to be kind of covering that here in a minute, but you know, a lot of the items that were addressed, and there are things we're going to be addressing in the, hopefully to help spur that along, including diversifying the types of housing, the development of kind of our sidewalk standards, as well as kind of implementing our complete streets policy with more walkable, bikeable areas in the downtown and throughout the city, as well as transit opportunities and identifying those in our activity centers. I will report that our talented planning GIS staff has just completed kind of an inventory of the sidewalks throughout the city, so we're getting ready to kind of move on to the next part, which will be kind of an assessment of where to go from there, along with our transportation department, who are a part of the task force as well. And then lastly, I'll just kind of touch on a green belt program. We are working with the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council, the regional agency, and kind of testing the waters a little bit with some of our regional neighbors about like how that might look going forward. Still very early stages, but ultimately looking at some kind of dedicated green belt program in order to kind of help provide not only green space, but also kind of drive more of our development inwards. So that is where we stand on that, and again, we'll cover a little bit more about the development ordinance here in a minute, so happy to answer any questions.
but also kind of drive more of our development inwards. So that is where we stand on that. And again, we'll cover a little bit more about the development ordinance here in a minute. So happy to answer any questions. I will note that the, what the ultimate effect of this is we will be continuing to refine and update these tables. That's going to be an ongoing kind of mission of the task force. Saying at least annually, we kind of do an update, like where are we? What are our goals? Are we still on track? This will be posted eventually on the e-plan. So it's the online version of the plan so that, you know, we can kind of update that as necessary. But that, it would be out there for the public to see the steps and the progress we're making towards implementation of the comprehensive plan.
Any questions from council?
I just had a quick question. As, as we're reporting out on this and as things are starting to develop and happen, if the public sees something or wants to provide input, what's the best way for them to do that? Is that through us to the task force? Or is there a place for public input on the website?
There is a, we have an email address. So it's just info@highpoint2045.org. So I mean, that is available at any time for people to, if they want to shoot us an email, or I would say just contact the Planning and Development Department and our number. And we're happy to, to listen to any feedback folks have. Of course, they want to talk to the council members and you want to relay that information to it. I mean, this is going to be kind of an, like I said, an ongoing process. That's why we have the task force, a kind of a broad-based group, trying to kind of reflect different views from across the city. So however you want to get that information to us, we will compile it and consider it.
I will say using the email address allows us to be able to keep a record of it as we've been able to document the feedback throughout the 2045 process and also the task force implementation work. It allows us to have.
So if I get an email, I could just.
It's forwarded to that.
I just have a comment to echo what Rashonda and Joe said. It is a very engaged task force. So there's been, you know, lots of engagement, lots of great ideas, lots of really understanding what others are saying. And it's been, I'm super proud of this task force. You all do every, they've done a great job. So thank you so much. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, thank you.
And any other questions, thoughts? Andy, I'm sure you've explained it to me before. It's a green belt.
Well, yeah, so the green belt, that's a good question. So that's one of the things that we have been talking about is rekind of renaming that. I'm not sure what the best name is, but a green belt is essentially open space, not just around the city, but kind of within the city. But really, it's a regional framework of looking at parks. It could be agriculture. It can be just forested land. It could be greenways. But basically, I'd say open space. It remains either undeveloped or developed for purposes like recreation.
Like an urban oasis.
Oasis, you know, inside, but also kind of between the cities. And so that's why we're talking with our neighbors because this really needs to be an approach where it's not just High Point. It's, it's more.
And you say you're still working on the name?
Yes, we're looking at, we're looking at a better name. That's what it's called in the plan. It's a, we're, how we're using it in the, in the tables, but.
Thought we were going to have some apprentices who are novice martial arts fighters or something. Honestly, we're just so lost when you said it. I looked around the table, everyone else was just nodding like they knew it. So I didn't want to call it out. You want to transition to the UDO?
Let's switch over.
Thank you.
Okay, hello again. So joining me for this presentation, I have Sam Hennett, who is in the Funding and Development Department. So I'm just going to kind of kick it off. This is about the Development Ordinance Update Project that has been ongoing since about February. So we are well, well into the process at this point. So we did do some community engagement. Main point here tonight is to kind of overview the, what we heard from folks and kind of give you a, a little sense of the feedback. You have a report of, it goes into much greater detail, including an appendix with like everybody's comments on it. So we'll just kind of hit the highlights here and then open it up for questions and talk a little bit about, you know, what, what's next in the process. So I'll start with just talking about our in-person open houses. So we did have three in-person open houses in June and July. So we were down at Stock and Grain during lunchtime, very active, kind of, kind of catching people while they're at lunch. We also had an early evening meeting at the High Point Public Library. And then we held an additional public open house in the Deep River Rec Center a little bit later in July. So in total, we had 40 participants during that process. There was also an online survey, which mimicked the information and the exercises that were conducted at the open house. So people who couldn't make it out still had an opportunity to give us that feedback. So we had an additional 21 people kind of respond through the online process. I will say, you know, development ordinances can get quite technical, unlike the comprehensive plan, which is much more about vision and the big picture and kind of people's, you know, you know, big thoughts. This gets a little technical. So we did hold 12 meetings led by Inspired Placemaking Collective, who I should mention is our consultant, who's helping lead with this project. So we had 12 different meetings where we can kind of focus a little bit more on the stakeholder input that we received. So with that, we were able to get over 100 participants with, with that process. So in total, we're looking at a little over 160 people who actually provided some source of feedback. And I will say those are listed in the report, I think on page 12, if you're interested in that. But included are a meeting with the High Point Regional Association of Realtors, as well as our neighborhood leader group. So let me just kind of walk through a little bit like what we heard and the feedback that we got. So the first thing we asked folks is kind of where they live, work, and play so they could kind of give us a sense of where they're coming from and the distribution of people who are participating. Some, some live, obviously, some work in High Point or they recreate or, you know, do different things throughout the city. So we feel like it was a pretty fairly good distribution. A lot of work and play down in the downtown, but really throughout as well as the residents. So we asked at the open house meetings and online about really a series of kind of broad topics that relate to what you find in the development ordinance. Just hitting it briefly, kind of the main topics that we asked about was expanding the types of housing, particularly focusing on kind of that missing middle that's between the single-family detached home and the more high-rise kind of apartment complex. There's a whole range of options that we want to see more of as we refine the development ordinance, including what's called a cottage court. Gave people examples and kind of asked for their feedback, like would you want to see more of this? The comprehensive plan identifies a series of activity centers kind of spread throughout the city, different stages from our regional to more of a town and then a neighborhood level. So we asked about types of uses that they think would be appropriate for each type of, of activity center and to give us that feedback. So they had boards and then we gave them dots and they could kind of select which, which types of uses they would want to see in the different activity centers. We also wanted to get thoughts on parking and streetscaping, kind of what they envisioned for that? Would there be any kind of changes to those we would want to see? As well as development incentives. Now, this is not monetary development incentive. This is more kind of a, the trade-offs that you could have in the ordinance for things like additional density or additional height. And then in exchange, you know, we would get open space or different. So it's kind of a matrix of trade-offs between, you know, what you would get and what you would give in exchange. So kind of gauging, you know, what people thought was a fair trade-off. Again, I will just note much more detail within the, the handout that you received, but that's kind of like the 10,000-foot view. I'm going to turn it over now to Sam to talk a little bit about the stakeholder feedback that we received.
All right, thank you, Andy. And I'm very glad to be here. So Andy talked about the, the general public input and the survey put, input from the general public. What I want to turn to now is the stakeholder input. So as Andy mentioned, we had over 100 participants spread across 12 different stakeholder meetings. Those stakeholders did include the Congdon Family Foundation treeback, the neighborhood associations. That also included city staff as well, so the TRC, local developers, local land use attorneys, local architects. So really kind of the subject matter experts, if you will. From those stakeholder input sessions, we did bring back 10 general themes. Those themes, as you see on your screen, start with natural resource protection and environmental standards. So that ranges from surface water buffer standards all the way to stormwater control measure enforcement. Zoning flexibility, that could be administrative adjustments. That could be new zoning districts or that could be other ways to encourage infill development within our core city. Not going into all 10. They are listed on page 12 of your guide in front of you, the engagement summary. But you can see that we did have 10 general themes that were discussed that our contractor put together and we will be looking at introducing into the development ordinance here soon. These emerging themes, one of the items to note is that they will be weighed along with that general public input as well as the 2045 comprehensive plan. So this is one of our main groups that we wanted to have some targeted input back from. But we also have the general input that Andy mentioned, as well as the guidance from the 2045 comprehensive plan. So what comes next? During the process, we were lucky to have numerous groups that provided input and that helped during this process thus far. Much work is still, is still coming. But as we all know, many hands make light work. You do have your core project staff. That core project staff is mainly the Planning and Development Department. You also have what's called the user group, which is the City of High Point's Technical Review Committee, the TRC, as well as community development and economic development. And then you also have what's called the working group. The working group, once again, is, is very similar to the stakeholder meetings and the stakeholder, stakeholder groups. It did have local land use attorneys, local developers, local real estate professionals. And so we really wanted that outside of the city expert guidance. So those are the three main groups. We're also going to have another touch point with the general public and I'll get into that here in a second. What we're looking to do is we're looking to break up the Development Ordinance Update into manageable chunks. We refer to those as modules, as you see on your screen. But they're basically sections of the Development Ordinance, different chapters broken up into a lighter package that can be more easily read, understood, and worked with by the user group, by the working group, and with select staff. So we're looking at having two more working group and user group meetings in 2025. We're also looking at have two more meetings in 2026. That is prior to putting this out publicly to the general public through the public input sessions. During the module work and, and this timeframe, we'll still have several touch points for city council. We will be providing feedback through city management. And so we do look forward to that process. And then also following that, we're anticipating later in 2026, after the public input, we're looking forward to bringing that to Planning and Zoning Commission and hopefully later to city council for the formal public hearings. So that is coming in 2026. No, that was a very brief overview, but both myself and Andy were here for your questions.
Any questions for staff at this time?
And the meat and potatoes, you know, potatoes of that engagement summary is in that document. Again, the stakeholder input, that starts on page, page 12 and goes through about page 20.
Homework assignment.
There's also a project website that you can go.
Additional homework assignment.
We did a similar process when we did the Comp 2045 Plan. But when you have these projects that are going over 12 to 18 months, we just want to make sure that we're kind of checking in and you all can understand how the task force is moving before we got to get that final document that's just coming to you. So we'll, I think there's one more check-in that we have scheduled to come back before council and provide an update. So there's opportunities for us to get your feedback throughout.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Mr. Hennett. We appreciate you both. Also want to thank Rashonda and Joe for participating in today's presentation. Appreciate you being here. At this time, we're going to adjourn the motion and go into closed session.
Go move.
Second, motions recognized to Councilwoman Peters, second to Councilmember Andrew. Is there a motion? Any non-allos in favor, please sit in front of the seat. Aye. Aye. The I's have it and we are going to the closed session.